Good afternoon. I call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, April 13, 2016. Thank you all for coming. The first order of business is the approval of the March 23, 2016 minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Do we have a motion to approve? A second?
Second.
All in favor?
All.
Opposed? All right. The next order of business is the following public hearing item, and we are going to flip-flop these. So, we are going to do the petition of Jimmy Ferguson to rezone approximately five and six tenths of an acre from I-3 Heavy Industrial District to I-2 Light Industrial District, and for a conditional use permit to allow the use of an existing building at 2301 Mayflower Drive as an indoor shooting range. Tom, you taking this one?
Members of Planning Commission, the property is currently designated for employment to uses on the city's future land use map. These areas include light to heavy industrial manufacturing, research and development, flex space, and large-scale office uses. Restaurant, hotel, and business service uses are also appropriate in these areas. The property is currently zoned I-3 Heavy Industrial District. The reason for the downzoning to I-2 is that indoor shooting ranges are not permitted within I-3 districts. If approved, the facility would include two ranges. One would be for use strictly by area law enforcement agencies, and the other would be available for use by the public. An accessory retail component, the sales of ammunition, I believe some arms sales, and a snack bar would also be accessory to the shooting range if approved. The facility would operate between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. There would be no reloading of ammunition or bulk storage of black powder on the site. The proposed 48 parking spaces would exceed the 30 spaces that are currently required by the city zoning ordinance. An initial concern for the facility as proposed was dealing with site distance with the proposed entrance. There is approximately 500 feet to the north, and about 265 feet to the southeast. After further review by the city's transportation engineer, she believed that this was adequate due to the slow vehicular speeds coming from the southeast. There would only be about 200 daily trips that would be coming to and from the facility. The zoning ordinance does provide for development standards for indoor shooting ranges. These include things such as design, noise buffering, annual inspections, and liability insurance. These standards have been included within the recommendations if the Planning Commission chooses to recommend approval of the CUP. The petitioner did conduct a neighborhood meeting at Fairview Heights Community Center on April 4. City staff was in attendance at that meeting. Do not believe it was very -- it wasn't very well attended, and that's probably because I don't believe there were many concerns with the range where it's being proposed. The planning division does recommend approval of the rezoning and conditional use permit, and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition?
My name is Norman Walton of Perkins North, and I'm representing the petitioner here this afternoon. As Tom mentioned, Fishing Creek Properties is seeking to rezone this property and for a CUP to allow the existing structure on the site to be utilized as a firearms range. The existing building will be completely renovated to accommodate the range, which will include air handling to circulate air for the safety of the employees and the participants, as well as containment of the fired shots, as well as noise reduction. And all of that will be internal to the building. The facility will also have a conference center or a conference room and a training room, a lounge, a sales facility for the sales of firearms and ammunition, as Tom mentioned. The facility would contain a snack bar for refreshments, as some of the training activities can last for several hours. There's a substantial need for this in the central Virginia community. Currently, law enforcement officers here in the city of Lynchburg only have the utilization of the outside range here in the city, which is right next to the airport. If they want to use an indoor range, they have to travel to Fort Pickett currently, and that utilization there is very limited. There are several other municipalities around here, Charlottesville, as well as Roanoke, who are beginning to construct similar facilities because of the need is so great. All of the law enforcement agencies in Region 2000 have provided Fishing Creek Properties their support for this facility. As Tom mentioned, a neighborhood information meeting was held on April 4. We had two citizens to attend and a couple of business owners. None of those in attendance seem to be in opposition of the range. Excuse me. The rezoning request, obviously, has gone through TRC with no major comments that would prohibit the use of the property here or the CUP. This facility will have a relatively low traffic volume, as you could imagine, less than 200 vehicles a day, we're anticipating. We do have water and sewer available to the site, and stormwater will be managed on-site for both quality and quantity, and we will be using the, what we could still call the new 2B criteria, based on the 2014 stormwater regulations that was passed by the state. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Great, thank you. Is anyone else here to speak in favor?
I've got a question on that. I live on Maryland Avenue.
If you could come forward, sir, and sign in and state your name and address, please. Thank you. You're welcome to grab a seat there, too, if you'd like.
Okay. Like I said, I live on Maryland Avenue, 3129, so I know I was...
State your name.
Yes, Phil Reed Jr. I'm on 3129 Maryland, and I'm a couple of blocks from Mayflower Drive. I think the property address, the proposed property address was 25, was it 25 or 2300 Mayflower Drive?
2301.
2301 Mayflower Drive.
I used to work at Burris Lumber, and across the street from it there, I notice a little trailer that's right there. Is that, I guess that's before you cross the tracks, is what we're talking about, that area right there?
Yes. Heading away from Campbell.
Yeah, yeah. It used to be, I did a lot of security as well. There used to be a place called, they dealt with putting up electrical wiring, and they ran out of business. Well, the property's been vacant for, I guess, about a part of maybe 15 years, which would be a good location, because, like you said, it would be facing the south of Campbell County I'm assuming that this is, since this side is going to be all soundproofed and all that good stuff, and matter of fact, you should have had somebody here from that street, because there's a street right here, and it's the property right here, and then there's Mayflower on a curve going back down across the tracks. So, I would think they would have an objection, if anything, but I just wanted to get a general idea of the location of it. That's all. Since you've told me all this, it's all good. I guess it's going to cover that entire area of the property that used to belong to this electrical servicing point. What you got right there?
There will be one building of the existing building that's going to be renovated. The other two buildings will be demolished.
Can I show this area to clarify?
Yeah.
So, the shooting range is going to be in these two buildings here, and we're going to redo this parking, and this is going to be the entryway. So, we'll come in, you know, as you come down Mayflower, there's that sharp curve.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we'll kind of come into the sharp curve to come into the site. The old entrance, you know, is all the way up here at that upper end where that last house is at. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Well, see, well, you're entirely within the old Burris Lumber property then.
Right, and we're going to have a property line that kind of comes through here. So, this lower part, this right up against the railroad tracks, will get subdivided off from the main tracks, so this will stay separate from that.
Okay. Because right now, I think BRC has this area right in here.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
I belong to a church called Heart to Heart on Hayden, and Hayden would probably be, I guess, let me see, close it up in here.
That's right.
Matter of fact, that's the church right there.
That's the church right there, yes, sir.
So, everybody's going to be, the direction of shooting is going to be towards Campbell County, back this direction, back behind me, to the south.
The lanes will shoot to the center of the building.
So, it's going to be to the south.
Right, so there's going to be one lane in this building and one lane in this building, and both lanes will be shooting toward the middle of the building.
Okay, I got you.
And then there's a large concrete vault essentially that, yeah, that's going to contain all the shots.
Okay. Because Maryland is close to here, that's why I'm living about right in here.
So, we can assume that you're generally in favor?
Yeah. I just need to know a location, because, like I said, this church is going to be, matter of fact, you can see the church right here clearly in the picture, but if you're saying that both ranges are going to be shooting towards each other, and it's going to, this concrete barrier between the two.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Good enough.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak? You can grab your seat.
I have a letter that I would like to read in favor of.
Okay.
And this is from Richard L. Thompson, and I'm going to provide this to Mr. Martin so it can be placed in the file. "To whom it may concern, I, Richard L. Thompson, own the property directly across from the proposed new gun range on Mayflower Drive. In my opinion, the gun range would be a major asset for our community. It would bring a constant flow of police officers to the area while they are using the gun range. This would serve as a major deterrent to crime in this area. Sincerely, Richard L. Thompson."
Okay, great, thank you.
One other thing, I did actually get to meet Mr. First, as a matter of fact.
Okay.
Because his property is, like I said, there's a fence that's about a good, maybe 10 feet tall that separates his property from a block that the church has.
Okay, great.
So, he's, he's, good man, good man.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak against this petition, in opposition? All right, at this point, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, are there any questions for city staff or the petitioner?
More out of curiosity, is, I'm assuming the consumer side of this building is facing southeast? The southeast-facing side with the larger parking lot?
Yes, sir.
Closest to Mayflower.
Yeah, that's right. Looking at the image, the white...
All right.
You're good. It's right adjacent to the small building there. There's the parking, so, Tom, if you could go to your left there, that little end of that building is going to be where the lounge and firearm sales and the counter is going to be, essentially.
Question, how, just out of curiosity, how long is each range? How long, how far can you shoot in it?
Building length is 75, 125 foot long.
Of each building?
Just going to be 400-yard ranges, and the rest of them will be 25-yard ranges.
The annual inspections, that's going to be an outside person?
Yeah.
But who, do they have to provide the results to the city annually to keep this license valid? What's the checkup on that?
Honestly, we've never had one of these, so we're going to have to put some type of procedure in place, and what I'm assuming we will do is we will flag it within our project track system to tell us that the annual inspection is due each year, and we will be calling and getting it to see if there's any issues with the operation of the facility. So, yes, they will have to be submitting it to us.
Okay.
It'll be the same issue with the insurance, with the liability insurance.
That will be handled through the risk management office, but they have to, it's $2 million the city wants to give.
Will there be, what's the security that would be on the exterior? Just because there is firearms for sale, would there be extra fencing, security?
Surveillance cameras? Surveillance cameras, all their own.
Surveillance cameras on-site. The firearms will be locked in a vault. Do we talk about that at TRC, generally, but not specifically, I think?
Maybe so, I mean, but, I mean, Walmart, Dick's Sporting Goods, I mean, they all sell handguns and rifles, so it's not like it needs to be locked up like Fort Knox.
Yeah.
I mean, there needs to be security.
Right.
Obviously, but it's a retail sales component.
And what happens with the waste products?
Oh, recycle.
BRC's right next door.
So, there's no, there's no concerns about any of the, spent, any lead or anything being, okay?
And that's one of the main concerns with the air circulation is actually the lead in the air.
Right.
So, there's a continual circulation to get fresh air in, basically because of the lead.
Will there be any more community meetings, since there was such a little turnout?
With the light attendance that we had, probably not. If we, if we had had a better turnout either here or at that neighborhood information meeting, we would have considered it, but with the light turnout we've had here, as well as the neighborhood information meeting, I would not expect us to have an other.
One question for you. When will be the completion date?
Sorry, sir, we've closed a public hearing, but we can invite you to come forward if we feel like we want to have him, we can, we can ask him if he has a question for the petitioner, if that's what we want to do. All right, sir, come on up and...
I just want to know when the completion date, when would this be effective, when it's going to be built and put in effect, put in action?
That, I don't know. Is the petitioner?
Yes.
Yes, sir, you can come back forward then.
We anticipate the construction to be completed in 18 months.
Okay. Any other, any other questions for staff or the petitioner?
I'd just like to make comment. I think this is a really great idea. I'm looking forward to visiting and seeing that. The indoor restaurant, I believe that with the snack bar is going to be intended as well?
Yes, sir, yes. There are several companies who, corporations, who are encouraging their employees to have gun permits now. And so, they will actually take a number of, you know, employees to one of these ranges and have, you know, several hours of gun training in order for them to get permitted to carry a firearm legally. And so, with a number of people there, you know, these training sessions can last several hours, so that was the idea, put in the lounge and the snack bar there.
And going back to the range distances, the majority going to be 25-yard ranges?
What'd you say, Jimmy?
Yes, good to say.
And what about longer distance? Will there be ability to shoot long-range 100-yard targets?
Yes.
And for the civilian side?
Yes.
Are there, will it be restricted by any caliber weapon?
No, sir. No caliber restriction.
Any other comments?
No.
Is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we approve this as written.
I second it.
Any additional comments? Anyone would like to add? I just would like to say, just in kind of summarizing some of the points, I had no issue with going from the I-3 to I-2. The traffic concerns, if you, they're spot on with the fact that you're not driving fast on this road. It's very curvy, you have the railroad tracks. When I was, I came into this kind of not knowing what to expect, and when I did some research on concerns about indoor gun ranges, the two biggest ones were noise and lead getting into the air, for workers primarily, and it sounds like both of those are being addressed. And if you look at this area, it's a part of the city that I think is going to benefit and look a whole lot better after this project is done than it does right now. And back to the noise issue, I mean, it looks like the current residents are a football field or two away, at the very least, and the closest thing is the steel recycling company, which is probably going to be making more noise than you guys. So, I'm certainly in support of this petition. Any other comments? All right, all in favor?
All.
Opposed? All right, petition passed. Good luck with counsel. Okay. All right, thank you. Our next order of business is our second public hearing item, the petition of City Spaces LLC for a conditional use permit at 3504 Powhatan Street to allow an existing single-family house to be converted to a duplex in a B1 limited business district. Anne, you taking this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of Planning Commission. The property at 3504 Powhatan Street contains one single-family home and is one block off of Campbell Avenue. It is zoned B1 limited business district. In B1 districts, single-family homes are permitted as a matter of right, and duplexes require a conditional use permit. All other residential densities are only permitted as part of mixed-use developments. The city's future land use map designates this area for mixed-use development. Those types of areas are really characterized by larger-scale development that contain a variety of uses within one parcel, including residential. The designation for this site changed with the adoption of the Campbell Avenue Oddfellows Road Plan in October of 2013. The plan envisions a road diet on Campbell Avenue, and, on Campbell Avenue, following the completion of the new Oddfellows Road interchange. And just so you know, a road diet is, it's essentially a reduction in the number of vehicular travel lanes, and then a redistribution of that space for other modes of travel. And the mixed-use areas that were designated as part of that planning process, they were established to help facilitate redevelopment once the road diet was complete. So, until the road diet is underway, planning staff does not really expect to see the level of development that's called for in this plan. So, even though the duplex, it doesn't really fit into exactly what the comprehensive plan is calling for, it does seem like an acceptable interim use while we are kind of waiting for the Campbell Avenue plan to take shape. Zooming back to the, to the property that we're looking at, the house itself was constructed in 1954, and it has a footprint of approximately 900 square feet. The petitioners are proposing to convert the 900-square-foot basement into the second unit. Each unit will have two bedrooms, so four bedrooms in the entire, on the entire property. The main concern that planning staff had was about parking. The zoning ordinance requires one space per residential unit, but does allow that on-street parking within 1,000 feet and connected by sidewalks can be used to count, count towards that requirement. So, on-street parking, it is available on both sides of Powhatan Street, and in the vicinity of this house, it can accommodate about 20 cars, and there are six houses that kind of share that segment of the street, so that equates to somewhere between three and four cars per house, if they're really parked pretty neatly in there. So, like the rest of the city, on-street parking here, it's first come, first served. There's no spaces that'll be specifically dedicated for any one unit. But when we were weighing whether or not we should require a driveway or not, requiring a driveway would increase impervious area, and then it would also take away one of those on-street spots that can be shared by the entire neighborhood. So, there is potential for parking to become a problem if we were to see more and more petitions like this, and more and more duplexes, and more and more units coming in, but at this point in time, we don't think it would be much of an issue and probably not worth requiring a driveway at this moment. Staff is recommending approval of the petition because of those parts of outparking, and that the duplex is an acceptable interim use per the comprehensive, or while we wait for Campbell Avenue to get completed. So, thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Anne. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this petition? If you could come forward and sign in and state your name and either address or who you're representing, thank you. Sure, yep, take your time.
My name's Alex Steady, and I am an associate of the owner of City Spaces, and he asked me to be here to answer any questions that you guys had, but generally, I mean, it's pretty straightforward for us. This is our first time doing this, so, yeah. I mean, if you guys have any questions, go for it.
All right. We may, we may have some after the public hearing, and I would say just stay right there in case we do, so you don't have to keep coming and going. Thank you.
I'll finish your language.
Sure. It looks like we have no one else either in favor or in opposition, so at this point, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, any questions for staff or the petitioner?
When you say it's your first time doing something like this, this is your first time taking a, first time in the real estate market, or the first time taking a single-dwelling home and turn it into a duplex?
Yeah, it's our first time converting something of this nature to a duplex, but it's going pretty well, I think.
I've got several questions. Why, why is this area B1 to start with? Are there any businesses there? There's a church?
Yeah, there's a church or a health...
Some kind of nonprofit, it looks like, it's right here.
Training center.
Yeah. It's a nursing school.
Yep. And then I think there are some business uses along Campbell Avenue.
Well, I can, I understand the business use along Campbell, but this whole area, besides that church or nursing, nursing training place, is very residential. The houses are very small, but there's nobody here that seems to care besides me. I just can't imagine, if I lived next door, wanting to have two units in that tiny house with really only two parking spaces in front of the house, the houses across the street looks like would use those parking spaces as well, so you could get, I mean, you would be using somebody's parking spaces.
So, I don't know the history of why this area is B1. My best guess would be that previous planners were trying to transition from that B3 along Campbell back into the more residential neighborhood.
I see.
Behind it.
Well, okay, and I don't have any problem with it being, with the flume advises, but then it would be, as you said, probably apartment buildings, which makes sense to have there. But to put a duplex in the middle of this single, you know, single-family neighborhood, I worry about parking, because you could have four cars for this one house, and you say that there's enough room for four cars per house on that street, but it seems like it would be a little tight. It also is such a small, it's a small house to start with. There's 900 square feet on each floor.
Yes, ma'am.
I just don't, I don't like it, but obviously, there's nobody else here to, to object to it, so.
In terms of parking, doesn't the last house have a driveway?
Yes, that's the only house on this street.
But that could be, but that could, that removes, that kind of removes them from the count of who would be using the street a little bit, at least by one or two cars.
Sure. Yeah, this house here has a driveway.
Yeah.
Also, the people at, across from the folks with the driveway have kind of like a little driveway section at the end of the road for their property.
Mm-hmm.
Will there be any development of the end of the road so people can turn around easier if there are more people? if there are more people parking on that, just to be able to get out if you're at the end of the street?
Nothing is planned at this time. If it becomes an issue, then we would refer them to Public Works, and Public Works would probably look at making some kind of better turnaround. But the right of way goes straight through, yep.
I have some concerns, like you, Nancy, I have some strong concerns. One, why a duplex versus an apartment? When I look at the duplex, and when we discussed back there in the zoning rework last fall, remember, we had some consternation about duplexes, and we typically think of duplex side-by-side, not sandwiched like that, so that when an owner sells one half of the duplex, the amount of property that goes with it. So if, so if the guy on the bottom sells or the guy on the top sells, who gets what part of the grass?
So I don't think the intention is for this to be sold. It would be essentially two apartments on top of each other. There's no subdivision.
Well, as a duplex, if you have a duplex, each is a separate unit. So one can sell one and the other not be sold. But if it's a duplex, it's a separate entity, correct?
Yeah, I think you're referring to side-by-side duplexes.
But we're termed it as a duplex.
I mean, you can term it, I think we're determining it as a duplex because it's two units. You could very well call it a two-unit apartment building. I mean, there's no way that you'd be able to sell the lower unit and then sell the top.
Yeah, I understand that, but I reckon what I'm getting at, the term duplex has a specific connotation. Whereas if it was an apartment, that'd be totally different.
I think the definition of a duplex in the zoning ordinance is two units, and then apartments is more.
You can have two apartments. And I think that's one of the things we were going around and around with back there when we had the public hearing about duplexes, about being caked or side-by-sides.
Well, I really think the negative connotations with duplexes are basically rental in single-family areas. I think apartments sometimes have the same negative connotations associated with them, whether that's fair or not.
And also with the, how many people live in a residence now?
No more than three unrelated people.
Three unrelated, so we can now have six unrelated people in a total of 1,800 square feet. So that is three cars. Well, we can only allow two cars, so four people don't get a car.
No, you're allowing six cars. There aren't.
They may not get a parking spot.
Yeah.
But six cars theoretically could be allowed.
Yeah, so that would definitely jam-pack that street there with six cars.
There aren't but two bedrooms per unit, but they're.
But we're allowing three people per unit. So that has potential for six cars.
Anne?
Go ahead, Anne.
I assume that your reason for not objecting is this is sort of temporary until the redevelopment of Campbell Avenue?
Yeah, I would picture that this whole area would see some sort of redevelopment long-term once the Campbell Avenue road diet is complete. I mean, I went out there and it seemed like there was plenty of on-street parking in the area. If they can't park in that immediately-adjacent area, then there's parking on the other side streets going down Powhatan farther.
The entrance to the second unit, the basement unit, is from the back, I take it? Or this?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a pretty long hike from the street. I'd rather they had a driveway if they're going to do it. I mean, if I were going to live in that basement unit, I wouldn't want to park on the street and hike down to the back of the house, but that's.
Does the house beside that have a unit?
In the basement?
Right.
It is not a duplex with a CUP, so not that we know of.
Right, so it could, but it's not listed that way, right?
Well.
I mean, I think.
I guess unless it's owner-occupied, then they could have a second unit that way.
Right.
I mean, I think, I agree with the concerns about the impervious surface and just the sheer steepness of that slope. Trying to put a driveway would be very impractical. Better access, but that's homeowner, that's a homeowner issue in my mind, making the access easier to the basement. When I visited, there was actually a lot of people at that house. And it was tight, but the fact that it was a dead-end road kind of helped things because you weren't going that fast, and it was really easy to negotiate down the road, even with cars on both sides. And granted, it was during the day, so probably a lot of the other cars who might normally be there at night weren't there. But it's still, even with a pretty decent density of cars, it wasn't bad getting around, and there was still a few parking, there was still plenty of parking. And, you know, I do wonder about the use of interim. When you approve something like this, it's not necessarily going to stop happening down the road because we've made other changes. But I don't, I don't have a major issue with it, especially since there doesn't seem to be concerns from the neighbors, either here or at the public hearing. And it's clearly, you can see the sign in the photo, they know it's happening, they can't miss it.
I actually talked to the folks there, across the street, across, well, yeah, across the street to the left, across the street to the right, across the street. Basically, everybody encompassing it, they were actually happy that we were doing something positive with the property.
Right. Are they homeowners? Hmm? Are they homeowners or renters?
Yes, I believe they're all homeowners in that area, so.
Well, I like what you're doing too. I mean, it's got a nice new roof. It's looking better probably than it did. I don't know what you're doing inside, but I just have this concern. It's a nice little neighborhood. We drove around it last night. Nice, you know, just a nice, quiet, pleasant neighborhood. And I would, if next month, the guy on the left and the guy on the right came in here and said, "We want to make duplexes out of our house too," what are we going to say to them? "Oh, well, we let the guy in the middle do it, so sure, I guess we better let you have a duplex too." And then you're going to have 18 more cars on the street.
Well, but if I may, you also need to look at what's permitted by right now, B1 district now, which is office, light retail, restaurant, which could, based on the size of the facility, use on-street parking by right. And there would be no review by the Planning Commission or council. So really, what you're looking at, whether it's a duplex or an apartment, you are looking at whether or not maintaining of residential use in this B1 zone is appropriate. Single-family homes are permitted by right, but no other residential use is. Yet, you could come in and do a commercial use by right, which would generate even more parking issues than.
That's appalling to me. I mean, I can't imagine any, I mean, I can't imagine anybody putting a restaurant there, but.
I can't either, but I could imagine someone putting an office there.
Yeah.
And that zoning has been in place at least since 1978, if not prior to that. And I think Ms. Nygaard gave her reasons for why it's like that, and I tend to agree with that. And it's probably, I'm imagining they were thinking that that entire triangle would develop as some type of office complex.
But yet it hasn't, and it is a pleasant neighborhood. I hate to screw it up. But anyway.
Isn't it safe to say, though, and I agree in terms of setting precedents, that it's within our right, if new petitions came forward, that we could say traffic is becoming a concern? And we don't have to continue to approve similar petitions?
Absolutely. And you could say that parking is a concern for you this time?
Parking, parking is what I meant, actually, yes. So it's, we're not setting precedent that we're allowing, that we can come back at any point and say, "If this, we've crossed the threshold, parking is now going to be a major issue." And we could deny it, or you guys could express concern earlier.
Right, I mean, there's potential for that on any other petition that you would approve, specifically a commercial one, something new that would come onto Timberlake Road now all of a sudden. That might be the one that's going to cause too much traffic or parking issues or whatever.
Yeah, obviously, you know, with the topography of the land, there's not going to be really any off-street lots for these individual properties. So if you started getting individual petitions, you would need to look at that. If the property were to redevelop as a whole, they would probably look at doing some type of off-street lot.
Any other questions?
I was just looking at the math there, you know, that pointy part there. Actually, you know, it's B1 there, but so we have property there on Georgia Avenue, Texas Avenue that's dual-zoned R3 B1.
That happens around the city. The portions of the property that are in the R3 zone would be required to comply with those zoning regulations, and the portion that's in the B1 would be required to comply with that.
Well, I think that's another good point. The properties surrounding this are R3. And if we were to come in and do a study of this area, one, we'd be downzoned, which would have to show that there was some mistake made in designating it as B1 if the city was doing it on its own merit, and there are some other reasons. But would you designate this area as single-family, R1, R2, with all the other R3 in the area and the B3 adjacent to Campbell Avenue? Probably not. You would probably designate it as R3, which is, would allow for duplex, which is what this petitioner is requesting to do. Yeah, it's difficult because of the parking situations, but I think you're going to have to look at that on a case-by-case basis.
I reckon one thing just, as you were saying, stupefies me, is that we have, the other property is R3 B1. I think that they just befundles me as why we do that to the homeowners who are just making either R3 and say, "Okay, your property's now R3, and so you have a stubby part that's just B1."
They could put a Starbucks up in their backyard in the back, yeah.
Yeah, well, that, how do you get there? Ain't a bad idea. But that's not what we're here to discuss about there. So you're right, we, I mean, they can do whatever they want. They could put, like, say Starbucks whatever there, or they put a duplex or apartment there. The sidewalk, as long as you're still sitting there, so how are they going to get to the basement?
We're putting in, once you come down the steps, a path that goes around.
Which side, right or left?
To the right.
Okay.
Okay.
It's less of a slope over there, and it's easier. We're going to put some stairs in. And then at the back side, there's going to be a concrete pad back there, kind of like a patio area.
And you target marketed to?
Just families. I mean, we don't want to get college students in there or anybody that's going to tear up the property or annoy the neighbors. So we're just looking for like a small married couple-type thing.
Starred family.
Yeah, just something like that.
Any other questions or comment? All right, do we have, yes, go ahead.
I do share some of the reservations about a duplex. But I do understand what you're saying about, you know, the zoning. And at first, I was thinking, well, I hate to see property kind of go backwards, actually be a single-family and go to two-family, but no homeowners seem to care. And if they don't, I wouldn't, number one, I wouldn't, I wouldn't see how I could oppose, and number two, I wouldn't see why you couldn't buy more and have parking behind them because there's, you know, if you had all three of them, there's a lot of land behind them. I went down there. Plus, you have a Tree of Life, that facility, I'd imagine it's busy during the day. I was there in the evening, and there was plenty of parking, 6:30, you know, so.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that the petition be accepted as drafted.
A second?
I'll say.
Any other comments from the commissioners? You know, I'll just echo what people have said. I mean, to me, this is, if you look at the zoning map, this is an R3 area, given what's surrounding it, and this would be allowed. And moving forward, parking will be a concern, but it seems like we can't accom, it can't accommodate the current petition. And it is cleaning up the site, and the neighbors don't seem to mind. So I'll be voting in favor of it.
I can't find a really hardcore reason to vote against it, so.
I can't either, I'm actually, it's so close to being a tiny house in my book. And I'm all for tiny houses. I would like to move into a two-room house right now myself.
It'll be available if council.
Yeah, if you saw her house, she'd know why she wants to move into a smaller house. We could all, everybody in this room could live in David, Mary, and Nancy's house and still have room as spare.
Yeah. All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, the motion carries. Good luck with your next step with counsel.
Thank you very much, guys, and we really appreciate it.
Do you need to bring up your situation now, or is that handled out somewhere?
You know, I think I'm going to talk to Tom about it a little bit, and I want to talk to a couple people in City Council about it.
But I'm fine with that. People have done that before. Okay. Any other business?
Well, you know what, Dave, I think I will say something about it. You know, I've got a sort of an opportunity coming up that I want to give everybody a heads-up on. I want to talk to Tom about it. I want to talk to a couple people on City Council about it as well. But just so everybody is sort of forewarned, I've got an opportunity coming up in late June, on June 21st. I'm going to be out of town for an extended time period and probably will not be back in town until the 28th of September or the 4th of October. And so that we don't upset the quorum process, I think the limited consultations I've had so far, it looks like the most appropriate thing to do is to take a leave of absence from the board, not to resign, but to take a leave of absence. And therefore, we can drop me off as far as the requirements for a quorum is concerned. So I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody in City Council about our, the city manager's office, and I do want to talk to them first, I want to talk to Tom. But just from a collegial viewpoint, that's sort of what's up. I would like to continue to serve, and of course, if I would miss that many meetings, that may jeopardize my attendance requirement. And that's why I would take the, you know, take the leave of absence, so.
I know folks have taken leaves of absences before. And given the fact that we were just now filling our entire committee and the expense it takes to train folks, I would support simply doing a leave of absence as long as we're communicating with Robin and Tom. Other absences, we might have to make sure that we have enough people at the meetings. But that's up to, that's up to you guys to really make the decision on that. Okay.
This actually happened one time before when the commissioner went on to say that. I thought there was something in the bylaws about it. Essentially, the commission can vote to give you the leave of absence. But what you do need to understand is that while we will definitely forward the commission's approval, assuming that they grant that, council has no.
Objection to follow. That's why, before, I brought it up here now, but that's one of the reasons I want to talk to the city manager's office and I want to talk to City Council, so. But Dave brought it up, and I thought, well, I'll go ahead and just make it public. But I do want to talk to a couple members of City Council and the city manager's office about it. And if they don't feel comfortable with it, I'll just have to resign. But hopefully, if they don't have a problem with it, and you all in your deliberations don't have a problem with it, that would be, it would make sense, I think, maybe to approach it like that, so.
Does it make sense to vote on that now, Tom, or do?
Yeah, the bylaw says an extended leave of absence may be granted by a majority of the voting members for educational opportunities or other activities approved by the commission. The chairperson. For educational opportunities or other activities approved by the commission, the chairperson, it would be you, shall notify the... Which is really me, I guess. Shall notify the city... Which is really wrong. Shall notify the City Council within one week after approval the final determination of whether or not absences will be excused, addressed with City Council.
All right.
So that's how that works.
Well, I would, you know, we'll have a meeting on... What day did you say, Robin? Was our next meeting date?
Well, I believe two weeks from now it's going to be canceled, because we don't have any public hearings. Okay, so the second one in May, I believe it's the 11th. May 11th will be your next meeting.
Yeah, and I should be here for that. I would like not to have a vote on it right now, because I'd like to talk to City Council, a couple of members of City Council about it before that, so we don't send up a motion that doesn't get accepted, so anyway.
And you will...
We have to approve of your reason, too.
Pardon?
We have to approve of the reason.
Education can be defined in very broad terms.
You going to Cuba?
No.
Well, and you might talk with Tom, too, about it. Make sure he's on board, too, since...
Oh, no, no, I was going to talk to him about it.
Yeah, okay.
But, yeah, education can be defined in very broad terms. I will be doing a lot of study of various city plans of Europe, city planning, city planning activities. Yes, exactly, so... But if I could beg your indulgence until the May meeting to take a vote on it, hopefully I can give you some informal insight that your motion, one way or another, would be affirmed by City Council.
All right. Well, so again, our April 27th meeting looks like it's going to be canceled, so we'll see everyone in May, and meeting is adjourned. Thank you.